Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for coming. It's right now nine o'clock. We got a big crowd and a lot of issues to do today here, so it's cold and we... What a better place to be. So, today we have with us Bishop Jared Taylor with us. He gave us a great indication about a year ago. He said, "It is pleasant for freedom to be here." Brought this again by Pastor Bill Miller of the Lewis County Pastor's House. So, I'd like to give this an easy invitation by Bishop Taylor.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful to thee for this day. Grateful for the blessing it is to live here in this community, in the state of Texas, and in the United States of America. Grateful for those who serve our community, for the members of this court. We pray for a blessing to be upon them this day, that as they listen and have to make decisions, that they would be guided by the... That they will be able to do those things which will preserve freedom and posterity, prosperity, kids, community. So that people who live here and raise their families here may enjoy peace and prosperity. We're grateful to thee for the many blessings thou hast bestowed upon us. We pray for those who have suffered here during this time with the pandemic. We pray that thou may continue to bless our community and those around us. That these numbers may continue to decrease, that people may be strengthened, and that people may be able to continue to go on with their lives. We pray that thou may bless us as we are humble before thee and seek to do what thou would have us do. We pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Good morning, especially to be very grateful to thee. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which is states and states and states. In the name of the Constitution, of the laws of this world.
Do you believe that you want me in the Texas flag?
I want the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, and state of the union. One, the people of Texas.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Bishop. Thank you, Pastor Miller. Okay, the first thing I'd like to tell everybody is that if you agree with me, if any item that's on the agenda, the sheriff has public participation warrants by the county. If you let the sheriff want to fill him out, hand it back to the sheriff. The sheriff will then give it to our town's board that's going to lie. This line will cover them and give them space and it's open to trial. We will call you and if you speak on the topic that you wish to address for no more than three minutes. So, the next item is the service award. This is a good part. This is a list of welfare fees. This is your field to take away.
Good morning. Our first service award this morning goes to Sandra Davis, who works in the office with me. She keeps everything running very smooth, and I'm sure nobody gets without her.
Well, she does everything in the suite of you was in elections. Now, she's a major. She's a very helpful person. If everybody had her attitude, everything would run a lot smoother.
Very positive.
Fifteen years. Oh, five years. You're not that old, are you? Thanks. This is Leanne O'Callaghan.
Judge, would you like to come? Fifty years?
Fifty years. I've got to say that, ladies and gentlemen, it was announced this morning that Leanne wanted to do elections. I can't get over that. And I want to testify that she looks better. I want that automatic with driving itself on the deal. My putter ship paid taxes. But Leanne gives suggestions. Leanne just break down, listen, five years for Leanne to walk.
Judge, you want to get...
Judge, you want to come down and do your...
You're too hard. I think y'all only know that's not going to be a credit. I don't know. Have you paid the taxes on the ship? Leanne is with great pressure. You do a great job as the treasurer. I mean, you keep us out of trouble and get our paychecks. Gets our paychecks to us on time, so here it is. Here's your book. A little less, too. That's it.
Next service award is for Anna Straight.
Anna Straight, five years. Works, I don't know, Anna probably know you, but we don't know that gentleman that you're with up there.
Tell her.
Come on up. Anna's been with you for five years. She has taken care of this office and ran this office. I couldn't have asked for a better employee. She has spent her five years learning from grassroots all the way up. She takes care of things professionally than anybody ever gives her credit for.
Next service award is to Katie Barton.
Katie Barton. Ten years. Very relish... I'd like to draw a bit of DA's office.
Katie, I think started off at the sheriff's office and then came to the DA's office. And she's the most experienced child abuse investigator in the whole county. It's because of her dedication and commitment to her job that a lot of bad people are where they should be now. A lot of people say, so, thank you, Katie.
Next award goes to David Tucker.
I don't know this guy. Is it James David?
He's a middle neighbor, just like me.
Yes.
Yeah. Goes by David. David has been with our office for ten years. He's the most experienced felony prosecutor in town. He's my right-hand man. I could not do the job that I do without his dedication. Thank you, David.
Ms. Armstrong is not able to attend this morning.
Ms. Armstrong has only been with me down at your third of years. Her work might be next week. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Let's now bring this to the present of this. If any of these papers could be closed, they must be closed. Not to my ear, broken. Okay, second. I'm looking at the May five, why people approve this consent of this? That's about fish or equal. Can you go to the section? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Although, motion carries five zero. Road and road operations, do you have nothing in road operations? So, now we're in Mr. Bell's one.
When it... One, the other one, Bishop. Governor accepted an application for a replant of order twelve B. You lock thirty-four twenty-five R and reserve area eight-one increasing to two. Stat recommends setting the public hearing to the replant for December eighth, twenty twenty.
December five?
December eighth.
December eighth, twenty twenty. I agree with you.
I'll make that motion to the set of public hearing on the R one replats, order total B, lock three-four, two-five R, and reserve area eight-one for December eighth. Thank you.
Get open today by season cotton. For the public hearing, order four, your twelve B lock. Remember, here the state is in the end of the month, or issue the eighth of twenty twenty, second five, four, three, four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Although, motion carries five zero.
Next, we have a public hearing to discuss and consider the concept plan of liver ranch. Probably located thirty-four ten weeks ago in Texas.
And we will now convene into a public hearing to discuss the liver ranch district.
The gross side of this concept plan is hundred sixty-six acres of the Jody Chambles Reserve, the H track number four, and the day Kewell's other than the H track. Number three eleven. Republic is created, twenty-two family, single-family locks, one commercial lot, and one water tank and tower reserve lot. The proposed concept plan is located in what it probably is at confusing two and will be served by Oklahoma Texas Water and onsite services. Proposed plan proposes to construct approximately sixty-five hundred feet of public gas storage. And for record, this in section one of the double permit regulations, succession six-five eighteen, concerning non-flow to the water system for fire suppression, legal minimum of thousand gallons per minute. The legislation does alternatively allow for a system for private use only with capacity of fifty thousand gallons to be constructed. Or if that maintenance of the storage tank in system is responsible for the owner of the system. At this time, the developer is in coordination with Oklahoma Texas concerning the water supply system and flow rates. If the flow rate does not have the required one thousand gallon, too many flow rate, and a fifty thousand gallon tank is not provided by Oklahoma Texas, the developer will provide upon with a minimum of a hundred thousand gallons and a resupply hydrant and fluid of the system. Coordination for fire suppression will be complete prior to final planning and construction plans. There's one variance requested associated with this concept plan would need to be discussed and considered before consideration of the concept. The variance is section one, section six-four B three D, and section two, six-four C concerning the street longer than six hundred, totally being involved. At the January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, the court approved this variance on a different concept plan for the same property, provided that the builder build a larger cul-de-sac as described in section one of the building regulations. Cul-de-sac diameter will be a hundred feet and the diameter will be a hundred twenty feet. The concept of... That concept plan was designed for larger lots, company, private wells. Stat has no objection to this variance, and the court chooses to grant this variance. Stat recommends the larger cul-de-sac as described in six-four B three D. All comments have been addressed, and if court brings the variance, stat determines approval for the concept of aspects.
I got a quick, if our march of the things, if he says it's okay with...
Yes, sir.
That's my last, sorry, pardon correction.
And we have a speaker. Almost like if we have a jewel of oil that would like to speak. This is jewel of oil. Your representative, Valper, that's right, this is her contact. Right, Mr. Commissioner, you take it down. General tour of the burden for brown engineering, and I'm here with CJP Development. Don't want to bother you. Have to answer any questions. Mr. Guy did a great job presenting the case. Have to answer any questions if you have it. Any further discussion? You recommend approval?
Ask I give some approval? You choose your variant, various. The variance to be made in the under cul-de-sac, if you don't know the fire suppression system required for that, when the fire, environment.
There's kind of two sides to this. We're working with Oklahoma Texas. They agreed that we're dedicating a lot to them by on-site water system. Kind of working through those coordination efforts. If they're willing to provide the tanks, certainly do that. If not, the developers are very good to provide upon. Supply hydra. Additional one would be the longer cul-de-sac accessing the existing residence on some of the property. Those are the two kind of aspects that we're looking at on the project. Judge, your appropriate motion.
Next, my question.
Hold it. We've got our... Yeah, we don't... Close the public hearing now. We're going to reconvene into the commission's court. Now that we're in the commission's court, I think we're...
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Judge, to approve the variance for the larger cul-de-sac on this road. Prove the concept plan, if it is within the larger cul-de-sac.
If you're excited.
Excited.
And motion is made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the variance regarding the liver ranch district to discuss, like, by permission of supply. All those in favor say aye. And although, motion carries five zero. Ever going to be back into a public hearing to discuss item number three, Mr. Hill.
Today, Governor Black, the court's considered opening and revising section one development permit regulations, section six-four F ninety, section two subdivision regulations, section nine point nine one, section nine point nine three, section nine point nine four and B three. And section three, infrastructure development regulations for manufactured general communities, section five eleven, and the county flood damage prevention law. Purpose of these provisions is to develop regulations for the flood damage prevention where there's a change to the title for who's administr... Administering these floodway regulations. Correctment of regulations was the floodway administrator is the director of environmental health. Many changes to the director of development, and we want to add sixty-dollar fee to the fee schedule on the ability to cover the cost of the public hearing goes with the need for these floodway breaks. While we were back in the flood, the flood damage prevention order, I sent it back to the payment to prove. And I sent that model order to tell me to address property that was not planted at all. So, I made the changes to try to keep it in the same with the son's grandfather, David. And that's what he had before.
Is county parent with Chris?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Good listening.
He said he was. He told me he wanted to change a little language in one of the B sections that I did. Was after a certain thing.
It's just a matter of wanting to change what you should be making more clearer before and after this, as far as David or...
Obviously, he doesn't want to leave that.
Yeah, he claimed rather than, I believe, we put that again, now, it is.
You're welcome.
After, if y'all approve it, I have to send it back to FEMA. Hopefully, they have, if not, I'll have to bring it back.
So, make any changes, look wherever you're about to hear again. Anything else? Okay, now we're going to reconvene back into the commission's court. So, if I hear an appropriate motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the updates and revisions to section one development permit regulations that is stated in the notes.
Second, that motion been made by Commissioner Cotton, signed by Michael Eagle, to approve the revisions that stated in the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Although, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to financial inspection, kid.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Today, you have two sections expenditures to approve this year, twenty twenty. Expenses are one hundred thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-four cents. The August offices will review all these invoices and revenue payments for that year. This year, twenty twenty-one, expenses have remained five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. We need to review all these invoices. You've also been getting this spreadsheet regarding payments over ten thousand dollars. Have any questions on any of this?
Can I post, pardon, Bill? This will year two thousand twenty, this will year two thousand twenty-one. Second, voted by Commissioner Bieber, who is making a still decision. I don't think one, second question, equal, is any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Although, motion carries five zero.
Next item, Judge and Commissioners, with monthly reports that you receive to copy out, we have reviewed these and recommend acceptance by the court.
Okay, you got all mixed, too.
We did.
Great job. Everybody, you want to applaud? My dear reporter's motion.
Judge, I'll make a motion to accept the monthly reports of the hearing in October, March, twenty twenty, and the number fifteen, twenty-one, second.
Okay, motion been made by Chief White to approve the final report. October twenty twenty, October fifteen, twenty twenty-seven, about twenty-five years. Any close to exception? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Although, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Okay, this one's a couple miscellaneous. Number one, discuss and approve or disapprove resolution two-zero, two-zero-zero-five-zero, a resolution to accept South American Vote Act and Act for Emergency Funds to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus for the twenty-twenty special election process. Michelle Marosa.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This is just the second part to the Paris Act grant that you guys delivered in the last commission's court. In order to receive the money from the state, the resolution is something that's required.
Do you want to make sure any questions?
This is the same Paris Act, section twenty-three forty.
Yes, sir.
With the point for the one percent candidate.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have two citizens that would like to come up and address this. The first contestant, Commissioner Daniel Peters. Peters? You promote your desk, want to point your test, if I hear them, I see what we can do, please. I'm proud. You, sir, we have three minutes.
Thank you. Well, I expected a lot more conversation before this happened, so I'll be brief. A waste of time. This matter isn't glad to hear that you approved last week. I've heard some conversations around town that this money is wasted and we shouldn't take it. I think that's absurd. This is likely to be... We've already seen the turnout for this election be greater than I know of pre-election day in modern Texas history. And there's going to be a lot of people who want to vote. Last time I checked, on day of, especially given that this county is... Obviously, I don't care for it, but this is a Trump county. It went, what, five to one, four to one for Trump last time? And a lot of Republicans are voting day of. I don't even agree with those people's votes, but I think that you should approve this money so that everyone can vote and everyone has the opportunity to exercise the franchise. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, Colonel Grant, would like to see your decision.
Yes, thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I'm going to say that I'll be brief, not even get my notes here, but Michelle has worked really hard to take the initiative to find these funds. I think Commissioners Court should and will support the election workers as much as they can. This is an important election and for the counties, for the country, and she's done the work, and we should support this. And it just makes sense because it'll be a hard, not only pre-election, but a very difficult election, by the way. If there's any question, I represent, if anything, of election workers, the tax favorites in the town, citizens. Thank you.
I do, Colonel Grant. Anybody else wish to address item number one? Any further discussion?
I just want to note that we've already agreed this, so this is just a resolution. So, appreciate everybody's comments.
Anybody wish to go ahead and make a motion?
I'd like to propose to approve the resolution, two-zero, two-zero-zero-five-zero.
A motion been made by Commissioner Bieber to approve resolution two-zero, two-zero-zero-five-zero. Over here, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Although, motion carries five zero. Next item, number two, discuss and take a proper action. Oh, I forgot. We have Judge Walton here with us this morning. He's got a lot of court business that the county can do. And I forgot this of all this, but we're going to pick up item number eight. Consider and approve changes to the jury room of the district court for social distance of jury trial during ground call. And change by...
Yeah, what we're looking at doing right now is in order to social distance, trying to get the courts back out and get them fully operational again. In the jury room, it's been a question that we put a door at the backside of the jury room going into the back hall. Okay, that way, if the jury's in recess or they're having a break or whatever, they can social, get everybody six foot apart. You have fourteen folks in that room. It's too small to do that. They've also requested, before the double doors back here, they want to put a wall and another door right there, and that secures the jurors. I mean, basically, you only have to have one by level take care of it that time. They won't be able to, people won't be able to get into the jury. I'm saying that, right? So, I've already priced the doors. You know, we'll have to cut a hole in the back wall, put the door in. The price of the door is about seven hundred and fifty dollars, door and frame for one door. We do the same thing in the hall. We'll have to build a wall and put a door in there. That's another thirty-six inch door. That's another seven or eight hundred dollars. The reason it's that high is that's a fire rated door. Or we're stating that the fire rated doors, that's what we have in the entire building. On the other side of that, I did visit with the city fire marshal to make sure that we were okay by doing that, because that is an egress hall in the event of a fire, and people have to move in back of the building, and they go out that double door. It's also a escape route for the judge's offices. What, didn't have any problem with it, except it's temporary. Basically, we're looking at, when this goes away, we won't be using it anymore. He did suggest that, and I don't know what I'm working on, but he did suggest putting in a temporary wall in the hall that when we go back to normal, when we do, we can remove that. They wouldn't become a permanent add-on to the jury room. Eight, that's just a guess. I'm not trying to...
That was what the fire marshal said.
That's what the fire marshal said.
Can anybody break through a temporary wall on the... I just, I can see you, Judge.
Get at the wall, probably. Yeah, but that's first I've heard about making a temporary wall. Unless that would probably be okay, you know, once things return to normal, in fact, do. Which I'm, you know, I'm not having much serious doubts about. Yeah, but that's somewhat a decision. Nonetheless, you know, if it wasn't that actually, it could be removed once everything returns to normal. But his presentation of what we're asking for as it relates to the jury room is exactly like this. But the situation is, and when you're having trials, and now, just sometimes you take a break, jury's got to go to the jury room. Twelve people can fit in that jury room socially distanced, in fact, only six with them. So, that's the reason we need the doorway. They would go into that hallway there. As I said, you're familiar with, we've been in that part of the battles of the building. And that would allow eight of the jurors, and we had two often, that's added to the four, to the twelve, to be socially distanced in that hallway, six in the jury room. It requires the door, it requires the wall on the west end, and they go over there. The reason that they, juror, trust, remain aloof from all other parties from a case that's going on, as you know, Judge. And that's the only way you can do it, is to create this structure that will allow that, and that there'll be no interference with the jury, no tracking from employees or anybody else. And so, it's, that's the reason we need that to be done. Now, we're going to have access to this room the week of November sixteen, which is the week that we'll resume jury...
week that we'll resume jury trials in Hood County. And we won't need it for that, for that, that week, so that this not as though we've got to get this done by November sixteen, because we'll be, that's on, man, we have access to this ju- central jury room for that entire week. We have it reserved so that, that the juries can come in here and be socially distanced during breaks or during times when the lawyers and the judges are taking up matters outside the jury's presence, as you know, happens. So, uh, I think that was a good presentation.
We're looking at twenty-five hundred, not counting any labor, we're gonna do ourselves. So I'm looking at the doors, uh, two doors, sixteen hundred dollars, and a few two and four essential sheet off.
Judge, you're okay with the, if they came up with more of a temporary in that main hall? Or do you think, are you, do you feel like it just needs to be framed in and, and made permanent?
Well, frankly, I'm, I think that the temporary would be okay, because hopefully this pandemic is temporary, that's the point, you know, some days it's gonna end, I hope that we're gonna blow up.
Me too, Judge.
Uh, we've got to get back to normal.
But I am kind of, I know what man, I'm gonna hack you down there for a little, so let's keep talking, man, and, um.
Yes. But, uh, again, I don't think the temporary would be okay, you know, uh, as long as it blocks the vision of anybody coming in going off the jury, when they're in there on break or when they're in there deliberating in the jur- in the jury room. And so I don't have a problem with it being temporary, as long as the nation and the world return back to normal. I'm all for that. Yeah, I'll get it. Jake, it's time. Did this come out of your button?
Yeah, yes.
Good. Jake can do most anything. He has, I have yet to see him fail in a project yet. Well, I think, yeah, you can say it perfectly, that's what we're, kinda talking about. Thank you, when you're wondering, I'm, you're asking, did you give that?
Yes, sir, I just, I look at that, it's not gonna affect my, uh, yeah, I look at it as a general mind, it's basically, I'm like, I've tried a plan for a few of these things that come up. I'm good there.
Good.
I'm just learning to do it, yeah.
I hear a proper motion.
Uh, someone consider it, approve changes to jury room, district court, social distance of jury trial.
A motion made by Commissioner Bieber, we go get him to approve the changes to the jury room, but the district court's social distancing for jury trial. Go ahead, your second. Second by Commissioner White. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Although, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Judge Walton, for coming down here. Thank you for the conversation. Let's get a jury night started, keep them safe. It's time. It's time.
It's way back time.
It's way back time, I agree with that. Okay, well, with approved five zero then, thank you very much, Judge Walton. Okay, is this, uh, the next one, I guess you wanna speak on, he's a good man, Indian.
He's a good man, he's been working.
Okay, so, not, but, yeah. Number nine, about County Judge Simon, time record, Lake River Conference Center, November the sixteenth, uh, in jury qualification, good call.
Oh, and, Your Honor, thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate y'all being here to discuss this, this issue, because, as you know, we've been going through a pandemic here for about the last eight, ten months. Uh, and as a result of that, we have not had a jury trial in this, uh, court since last February, all right? This is a court, uh, that typically has anywhere from two to three or four jury trials per month. Uh, but that, as a result of the pandemic, all of that has been shut down, and there have been no jury trials, and we've been able to conduct a jury trial since that time. But, uh, over the course of time, the Texas Supreme Court, the Office of Court Administration, and the Governor of Texas have formulated a process whereby, uh, we will be allowed to re- return to jury trials. And it requires that I submit a, a plan to the, uh, the Office of Court Administration and to the regional residing judge, who is Judge David Evans from Fort Worth, as to how we would be able to conduct that, that process and keep safe all participants, that is, the citizens, the lawyers, the, the parties, uh, the court staff, all those participants that we had to have a program whereby we could do that. I've developed that, I submitted it to Judge Evans, who is the residing regional judge in Fort Worth, and he approved it. And so we are resuming jury trials in November, right? Week of November sixteen is when we might have the first. The problem is, again, social distancing, all right? We, we have, do not have a room in this court, this court building that's large enough that socially distant would accommodate a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty jurors, all right? Typically, on any, you know, any day when they were picking juries, we'll have a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty people in this, in this room, okay? It's about, it'll be along the hall, along the walls here, but now, as you can see, that would not work, that would not be accommodating, uh, the social distancing requirement. So what did we do? We went first and looked at a facility over, Jim Mayes, who over at the GIX, the administration building, as possible locations for doing this, for starting for, uh, continuing the, the jury trials and jury selection and qualification. That wouldn't work, it really is not appropriate, there's no parking either. So we looked at the only other facility, and that is the late, the Grand Bridge Conference Center down there on Pearl Street. And, uh, that facility, uh, will accommodate, uh, socially distances, uh, up to a hundred and twenty or thirty people, and it would allow us to be able to engage in jury qualification, jury selection, uh, in that, uh, large room that they have there. I'm sure many of you have been there on various time occasions, uh, and it would allow us to do that and to select the jury, qualify the jury amount, select them, and then, uh, we can try the cases in this building, we can actually have the trial itself invented in this building, because the rooms are large enough for a twelve to fourteen jury, uh, made up to, uh, conduct those, uh, juries themselves. That's, uh, that's basically what we're talking about, Judge, uh, we, we need to get approval to, uh, uh, rent the building down at the conference center for, to do that. The cost is eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars for that day, the jur- day of jury qualification. Now, you need to understand, this may go on for a while, all right? Uh, again, you know, it's, it's, as, when the pandemic ends and we, we are able to return to normal, then we'll be able to stop doing that. So I'm saying it may be eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars per month for the next six months, I don't know, no, nobody know, frankly doesn't know. And so that may go on for a while, but we do have a means of getting back to work, getting back to jury trials, and it's extremely important that we do with backlog of cases, persons who are accused of crimes, sitting in jail waiting for the disposition of their cases is, uh, is, it's just untenable, and we need to get back to, to doing that, disposing of cases through the jury process. And the only way to do it is just the way I told you.
I agree with that, so. And, you know, those residents are never, like, plea be, plea be.
No, there's no insistence, you know, they must run into Hood County Jail and go all down to Knoxville, and, uh, you know, the, the, the people of Hood County are fairly law enforcement oriented, you know what I mean? And, uh, so, uh, that, there's, it does not, they're not incentivized to dispose of their case very much when they know that they don't have to face a jury.
All right, so here, a proper bumping. There are a bunch of questions, who's trying to affect it?
Can we use on one oh one CARES, it's emergency money, and the CARES money will go in there, and I have sufficient budget at this time to take care of at least six months.
There you go.
But, but, and I'll get from D P five.
Take care of it. Oh, it didn't, like this situation, didn't make any situation, so, come on, one oh one, is that sent back?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So.
Yeah, and just long picture that everybody knows this could go on for a while, like, yes, it could go on for another six months, and it could be eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars every six months, I don't know. So we'll find out. And, and, and states of this motion's, we're on the sixteenth, but who needs to say in previous months and two, we get it cleared out?
Yeah, a month, however, yeah, a motion, we go get it, pay eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, or the month of November twenty twenty, after any succeeding months, at least for the next six months.
Can't you make that motion?
Okay, that, that's just what I said. Right here, second, second to our motion, second by Commissioner Bieber. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Although, I may be back in six months, all right? I hope you're not, I'm glad you're too, I hope not. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll get out, it's, okay. He asked, we've been living, I'm, that's right. I like you, Judge, you bet, thank you very much, I appreciate it. You did a great job for Hood, I, I appreciate, he kind of worked. I tell you what, this one judge here disposes of four cases, I think he'll be able to single judge, I bet you, and state that, I mean that. And when he, when word gets out to the jail, that we're gonna have jury trials, they'll start making some pleas again, while they're here, and they'll be leaving your hotel. Thank you, thank you, Judge. All right. Okay, back to you, Michelle Maruza. By the way, Michelle, would you ever send me a people that have early voted so far?
Yes.
I'm gonna list all the doctors, okay?
Through yesterday and Thursday, we had sixteen thousand four hundred and four voters voting.
Can you believe that?
Thirty-five percent voter turnout.
Thirty-five percent, that's, okay, so far, so far, and that's not even the ones that pumpkin, now, let's bring this to item number three, justice, make appropriate action, so now the election administrator, temporary, or set a pay rate for all part-time election workers? Okay, go ahead and tell us about that.
Hello, everybody, so what I would like to bring to the court is to increase the pay of our election day judges and alternate judges, along with our early voting and election day clerks. Now, um, this money would actually come from the Health America Vote Act, which is a CARES Act grant that was approved in the last District Court. My figures on this will be, if it were approved, each judge and alternate would see an increase of seventy dollars on election day, and our, our election day clerks would get fifty-six dollars increase for their day of work.
Right, I tell you, people have, were coming in that building, that's where I've stayed, and, uh, the line is sometimes wrapped around, all the way around, and it's our election workers, they're paid as well. They've done a good job, and it's, I've never seen this before, why do people come up and go in? I think it's, you know, for our clerks and our next judges, uh, uh, there's virtually a lot of people, in America, on average, one week is like fourteen, fifteen hundred a day.
Right. We were averaging fifteen hundred voters a day up until this week, and since we had our first twelve-hour day yesterday, they saw almost two thousand voters just yesterday in the cold and rain.
All right, Judge Walton said this is out of all because of COVID, and people get that COVID, and, uh, is there any more discussion about how, how this is? Commissioner Bieber, do you approve the increase as stated in C two, right here, second? Second by Commissioner White. All those in favor say aye. Although, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, one more, Michelle Maruza.
So on number three, I would like to also see that increased for the temporary office workers that we have in place. I have been extremely blessed with not having one, but up to three people who will come in, and we didn't give them time to help us in the office, so you can imagine how small our office is, but we're all crammed in there, and they work non-stop. So to also show this appreciation, I'd like to also increase their pay temporarily to seventeen dollars per hour.
I wonder if that manager ran the home, I see there, there's a coffee booth, people out there, they're waiting in line, so, you know, they're out there in the cold, too.
Right, so I have one lady comes in twice a week, and she's been there every, twice a week since I've been on this job.
How's that off, take her? I don't know.
Well, the other chief people, you know, they're probably video member, but I have one lady that's there, she's my, uh, part-timer. I have two temporary that'll be gone probably around the middle of November.
Be track, uh, this is, I'm not offering.
Yes, sir.
This is not for your full time, so these are your temporarys?
Yes.
Temporarily, okay.
You're only on temporary, right?
I have temporary and I have a part-time reserve hours.
Is that one?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I have to, and then, uh, two, four, we need to pass out, that one, or set the play button. And the effective date?
I don't have an effective date on here, because this was on the last agenda. It's my understanding that we can't backdate anything, right? We can't put it for effective, when early voting started, which would have been October the thirteenth.
Well, let me tell you about, well, this is, we get HR, we get the elections administrator, and we had, uh, work together, let's make sure it's all legal, if, if, yeah, go back to, or, if you're ready, whatever, let's do it. If you can't, sorry about that, and we're gonna violate the law, so, let's see what we can do.
Well, we can make sure that we clarify this for part-time and temporary, or we just doing temporary?
The judge, uh, just temporary.
And it would just be my temporary, I, I had thought that I had included my part-time one year, but that might have been one that I removed. So it just leaves temporary.
It is temporary, okay, not the part-time.
And then it would only be effective through November the fifteenth, not December thirty-first.
Okay, so November the fifteenth, that'd be effective, or temporary, all this work, right? I'm thinking about part-time.
Exactly.
Now that we have an appropriate motion, so, uh, second, second, all right, we may talk Commissioner, uh, Bieber, to increase the temporary office worker's pay rate to seventeen dollars an hour, that's just, thirty fifteen, second by Commissioner White. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Although, motion carries five zero. Okay, one more item, Michelle, is it?
I have a couple more items, actually, so number four is just going to be the update on what's going on with the elections. Um, as I said earlier, we did, we have seen up to, last time, seven o'clock, was a little over sixteen thousand registered voters. We have seen in the cold and the rain, voters stand outside and sit in that, their heat, they had that storm on Friday morning, when we had voters out there, it's been very interesting to, to families, but business is moving, and we're still walking.
Then, Bieber, you've been here a long ways, I can't say, you're, you're, water's just wet, whatever, that's, we haven't seen the, um.
You know, here, the first two to three days, they, they make a pretty good little line, after that, it goes light, uh, yeah, I said, I've never seen this, I've never seen the lives, very public, and it's been extended, I think, we, you know, uh, the days have been extended to get more people in, so.
I would.
And, I would think, if I, I love this story out there, before they open, it's early in the morning.
Yeah, the day three open at eight o'clock, when we get there at six forty-five or seven, there would already be a line there every morning. So there's not been a line, but we show that there's stopping, people already in line ready to go.
Once again, I want to compliment everybody in county that's assisted in this election, we all just, especially all the employees in that, I've never, I mean, everybody that's chipped in everything, you know, I think everybody that's worked together, and as far as I know, there have been glitches in voting, and that's what we want, we want to make sure that all election laws are followed, and every legal vote is count, counted, and every illegal vote is not counted. So I think we're on our way to doing that, so I think we've been a great job, and, uh, appreciate everybody in the county assisted in this election.
One other thing I just wanted to remind everybody is that we, we are open tonight until seven o'clock, and then again, on Friday, we'll be open seven to seven, and Wednesday, Thursday, we'll be there eight to five, so early voting is still happening, so if anyone hasn't made their way there yet, I would encourage them to head that way.
Good, thank you, good, thank you. All right, now, what is this about five on the side? We don't.
Um, on number five, I just wanted to get an idea on what the Commissioners' Court was interested in. We do have two certified vendors here in Texas that, um, if we wanted to move forward to purchase a new voting equipment, I would like to find out from you guys what you're interested in. Do you want to have a demo date, or have you seen enough?
Uh, this is not for this election.
No, 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 this is just for the future, because we're already, we only have so many Commissioners' Courts left this year, I wanted to be able to try to fit it in.
We just want an idea.
I'd like an idea from you guys, what you'd like for me to set up.
Well, I tell you what I'd like to do, I'd like to have a, a projection, like you, of what you think, and what the other counties, the other county, or what we need, and then what kind of voting apparatus is necessary. I know that this is a huge expense.
Yes, insurance.
I mean, if we switch over to new voting equipment, we're talking millions of dollars, I don't know.
We're no, we're talking about, um, six hundred thousand dollars.
I think we've got that in the budget, no, checking?
Yes.
We're, you're talking about, uh, yeah, so there's, are?
Yes. If, what I would like, if this, you guys are open to it, I'd like to set up a demo date where they can both come in and show you their paper-based systems.
Yes, we did this, uh.
Two years ago.
Yeah, a few years ago, did you record room? No, we didn't, uh, it had its one meeting room. It was good, being able to see paper ballots and, uh, the other way we could go, and I thought it was a good idea, but we got the corporate. thought it was a good idea, but we've got new court records out, uh, as the same, yeah, but in Bruce's only one. And, uh, you know, my add, that we've got two new court records coming home in January. Could you wait until that's the court records go?
Absolutely, I just wanted to get a feel for what you guys.
That's what I was about to say, is you get to see what was going on.
I think that's good.
Yeah, probably.
All right, so we will shoot for something for us next year.
Yeah, we'll probably back up and then you can remember, if we are seeing positive, they won't say, yes, I won't make that decision about spending six hundred thousand dollars. I want them here to share that responsibility, so that's great, we will do that. Well, thank you again, all that you're doing, give us a prize.
Sure, I'm grateful.
Okay, this is item number six, and once again, we turn to our illustrious public source, this is Jake Wyman. I want you to know that when I got this flyer, like I said last, Commission Court about removing the algae and stuff on the Commission Court, I need to look at it for a second, I just sent it, told him to send it to Dave Wyman and to see if this was, first of all, legit, and was maybe this normal good work, it is legit, and I had the opportunity of seeing both the two owners, two owners.
Yes, yes.
That came out from here, and they were very impressed, because Kate Kevils, what you found out.
Okay, they, uh, again, they're very, they're very impressive, very professional, they've done this all over the state of Texas, they've got very good reviews from everybody they work for. He also brought a lot of pictures of book. I mean, they, his product will clean and will not damage anything. Uh, most of what you see on these courthouse's and brick and makes the walls, the black streets and stuff, more than outdoor, that's basically what it is. His product, when he puts it on, he, he does, it's not high pressure like when you go in and use the pressure washer, um, because that leaks streaks and leak lines and the brick and whatever, the rock. What his does is a lower pressure, he puts it on, uh, rock is porous, it's going to pull all in chemicals into the rock, so every single time it rains, it releases a little bit of the product in, back out on the rock. He guarantees his product for thirty-six months. He said he's got courthouse's ten years old that he's done, and he's coming back, but he does guarantee his work for three years. And, uh, so obviously, while we were talking, we kind of split it out. We did just the walls of the courthouse, we got to looking at the roof, and we thought, well, the roof don't look good either. Uh, does anybody know what color the roof is? Because I don't. It's black, and I'm pretty sure when it was remodeled, it wasn't a black roof, so I don't know, is anybody here that was here?
Don't start that again.
Okay. I bring it up, because I don't know. So anyway, uh, I've got the proposal, I put one out there after all of y'all. Basically, what he's looking at is a courthouse. Well, let me back up a bit, we're getting the price, he's going to bring all, this includes all equipment, he's going to access everything from the outside, he's not going to be hanging out no windows or anything like that. He will go to fly to it down, so it's some pretty heavy equipment coming across our yard. He's going to make provisions that he will not damage anything on our property. Anyway, it's twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven thirty-six to do just the rock walls of the courthouse all the way around. Now, that does include the gazebo steps and landings, but it doesn't include sidewalks. Now, the second one he did was for the roof and the clock tower, which, as you know, we're kind of proud of the clock tower. So, anyway, if he does all that, it's about eighteen thousand square feet, and it is hard to get to, and it is a lot more labor, but we're looking at fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety-one sixty. Now, that.
Executioner.
That's in addition, so I do have a total number on the last page, and this also includes General Granbury, because I had him put General Granbury in there, he was looking a little rough around the age, so I'll get clean too.
Always, thank you.
So, the total price to do forty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-four square foot courthouse walls, roof, gazebo, clock tower, as well as General Granbury, he calls the statue, uh, is twenty-four thousand four eighteen ninety-six.
Eighteen ninety-six?
Yeah, twenty-four thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-six.
Um, you know, when we were out there talking, David, we just represented, just trying to come to the office, we were talking about if you just do part of it, the walls, then the rest of it is all a bitch. But if you do the clock, you know, it's really needs to be done together, and what I liked about it, the guy himself developed the substance that cleaned, and I said, well, what about it washing off as soon as the rain? He says, no, it does just the opposite, it reactivates it to keep the algae from coming back. And I was really impressed with this guy, but I didn't know when I let him tell you this, and I was listening. And I really like it, and I think it's good, that's our courthouse has something to be proud of, and it's pretty good and protect that, I did like it, I think it's a good idea.
Do you agree? I think it's an excellent idea, um, it does bring a lot of folks to town, it does help the looks of the square businesses, they appreciate it. Uh, also, you know, I kind of wanted to do it before we put all the lights up, and we'll get the lights on, and we'll get the courthouse decorated, and you know, so.
Didn't say we could do it before we hit the Christmas.
We did.
Okay, that's a good deal, and of course, the mayor, I think he's out here, jumped on me last year about saying, oh, if you do something with your own courthouse, we call me an accident, and that's a bad word, of the city, we do such and such, but I challenged him on that, but I do think that we should do something and work with this money, uh, one fifty-five?
Probably fifty-five.
One fifty-five.
And he did take a pretty good look at Granbury, he did look at it.
Thank you, I know it's not helping, I mean, we have to.
So Jay, you don't want to pay for that?
No, sir. I'd love to.
That's what I said, we, we managed to do, to pay a little bit of money, but it's something that we need to do, and we would accept half payment from the cities, the mayor's one, they brought it up.
That's a good idea.
As mayor, you can.
We got a list, we'll help you out, thank you.
Well, I think one thing else I was impressed with this guy, and that's about bringing the equipment, I asked him, how was he going to access the bell towers, the clock and everything? He suggested, well, maybe I'll live it, but I'm going to lay it down here, send that our equipment for my standing, the law, or anything else important. Jay's going to be there to supervise and make sure that nothing's going to be wrong, so I think all in all, it's something that we should do.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Are you sure I would purchasing, you need to do, is this a single source, or single?
I think, uh, he said it was a sole source, I haven't seen it, but.
It is a single source, because he's the one that invented the substance, that nobody else does, in fact, I asked him, what's the one that's the sole brand, that.
Yeah.
So good, good, well, nobody will, they can apply.
That was the exact words, he did, he's kind of, uh, he's very detailed, ran it on down to fly, uh, it's just not anybody.
I'll just need to bring the paperwork for you guys to sign next court. Same as.
All right. That was all that's going to be, okay. If not, I make a motion that we allow the health desk to, to, to treat the courthouse all bruises, evil clock tower, statue, uh, from there, we treat it forty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars, forty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-dollar per feet, and a proposed price of twenty-four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-six cents to be paid from one oh, one fifty-five, one fifty-five, I'm sorry.
I second that.
Okay, I just did basically set the best interest of cotton, all those in favor say aye, and I oppose, motion carries five zero, please get it checked with Mr. Bell, tell him to come.
We'll do it today.
Good deal, thank you very much. By the way, this gentleman, what really also impressed me is that he's got two sons of three sons, but he has one son within the special needs guy, but you talk about paying attention and his shirt on, I mean, a very impressive presentation, but.
It was, it was, uh, I was very impressed, he did it very well with his son, his son, is really part of this organization, uh, the family, it's a family-run business, and and that son is a big part of that, so it's kind of touching when you're around him.
I asked him if he gives me his word it was going to be, he said, yes, Judge, but he's looking at, sure.
Good people.
Good deal, thank you, you have to rock well done.
Yes.
Oh, you've got another one.
Yeah, one more.
Yeah. Consider approve the painting and repairs of the exterior juvenile probation bill. What's about that?
It's kind of just general maintenance, but, you know, we try to bring things to court that are going to cost greater than five hundred dollars, uh, that way, you know, we just, it kind of, I want to keep going, knowing what we're doing. We got a work order that they needed some painting and stuff on their shutters and that, I got to looking at the building, the building's in bad shape, so, uh, we need to put some new trim up, do some painting, some siding, a couple of windows, it's not going to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars, but it's work that needs to be done, just like painting and decorating, and it's just something.
So that's a force that I'm running down the building.
Right, and so, and it's coming out of my budget, we kind of figured for it, so it's going to be around twenty-five hundred dollars, give or take a hundred, it won't go for twenty-five, but we have to replace all the trim over corners, I think we got one window, and I'm probably going to put solar strings up, we build it ourselves now, so we'll probably do that. And some painting, I've actually already got.
Okay, you're appropriate.
Yeah, I'm making a motion that we approve the thing that's repairing, painting the exterior juvenile probation bill.
Three seconds. Okay, what's the thing about the people? Approve the change of years, the year through all probation bill, second by, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five zero. Thank you again, thank you for our. Okay, this brings us down to item number ten, consider and take appropriate action to approve the TCBRS plan agreement for planning your twenty-twenty-one. That's a welcome.
Good morning. This, I had sent this to you last Friday morning, it's a comparison of our current plan and the new plan starting with January one, twenty-twenty-one. Nothing has changed, um, I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can answer. Hopefully, I can be helpful, that if you have any, uh, you will notice that we did send an additional contribution back in June, and they received that credited to our plan, so we are starting now with a total contribution rate of ten point one three.
Well, you're in favor of that?
I am, this is a great retirement plan for our employees. I just came out breaking up about it, and anytime we hire a new employee, I go on and I'm talking about how awesome this retirement plan is, and how huge it is for the future.
I've heard it say a thousand times, that here's our retirement plan, and he said it's giving it to these employees in our county, so.
It's one of the best, I would say.
Very, very important. This will put us at ninety-eight point six percent.
That's correct.
Okay, I hear you're appropriate. I'll make a motion to approve the TCBRS plan agreement for many years, twenty-two. Second, it was meant by cotton to approve the TCBRS plan agreement for twenty-one, second by Commissioner Bieber, all those in favor say aye. I oppose, motion carries five zero.
Thank you so much.
Okay, this brings us, I remember, in last, the South take appropriate action to add resolution regarding City of Granbury, the public wastewater treatment plan regarding month twenty-one, we're in Granbury Road, just tied to this table at the Commission Court, due on October the thirteenth, twenty-twenty. Okay, Commissioner.
Eagle. Uh, I just, uh, put this back on the agenda, you remember, we talked about this, uh, on October the twentieth, during our scheduling, Commission Court, uh, we taped it till, actually till last, uh, Tuesday, October the twentieth, at which time we were under the impression, and actually had city members out here, uh, that we talked about meeting with them on the twentieth, at our quarterly, uh, joint session between with the Commission Court, City Council, and the school district, and we received a note, uh, the evening before the twentieth, on the nineteenth, that the city decided they didn't, they needed to cancel that, and so the school district decided not to come, and we decided it would have been kind of futile, we've already heard the arguments with, uh, Commission Court, so we, uh, that meeting got sa, uh, canceled, and, uh, so I just put it back on, I don't know if anybody's going to speak, um. I would say that this juncture, you know, I would like it someone to read the resolution into the record, because, uh, it was under the understanding, the city manager hadn't read it yet, so I figured it'd be a good time to read it into the record, but we can do that now, or we can wait and let people speak?
Why don't people get to read the resolution first, and then after that, just speak to get there?
Okay, good.
So we'll be talking.
Okay, good. Uh, resolution regarding City of Granbury proposed wastewater treatment plan at thirty-one twenty-one Old Granbury Road, whereas the City of Granbury is currently proposing to construct a wastewater treatment plant at thirty-one twenty-one Old Granbury Road in the county of Texas, and has applied with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCEQ, the per, for a permit to move forward with said wastewater treatment plant, and whereas communities located on the perimeter of urbanized areas and rural communities are becoming more dependent upon each other to partner or engage in existing partnerships to provide qualified wastewater services, and whereas Hood County has been designated as the most fastest growing community in the entire country, and whereas as a region of unprecedented growth, which will only increase the population density, the need for adequate wastewater treatment services is a crucial component to protect water quality in the county, and whereas the Granbury Water Shed Protection Plan was developed in two thousand and ten by a steering committee of landowners, agricultural producers, city, county, and municipal utility district officials, local businesses, and industry representatives, and concerned citizens, working to improve the welfare of Lake Granbury, and whereas surface water and aquifers are not limited by political boundaries, and as a result, environmental solutions often cross federal, state, and local levels of responsibility, and whereas with the extent and variety of water, water quality issues across Texas, the need for cooperation in all levels is essential, and whereas Hood County has adopted development permit regulations, which are intended to protect the watershed that drains into Lake Granbury and the Brazos River from the ill effects of pollution and urbanization caused by uncontrolled development for the present and future residents of Hood County, and thereby all citizens of the state using Lake Granbury and the Brazos River for recreational purposes, and whereas local government has an obligation to accommodate future population growth in a manner that is compatible with the county's natural resources, and whereas local government has an obligation to promote health, safety, and general welfare of the county's citizens, and whereas any wastewater treatment plant in Texas should be based on accurate data input and real oral science, and whereas no wastewater treatment plant facility should be constructed. And whereas no wastewater treatment plant facility should be constructed by the city of Granbury until sufficient scientifically reliable data is uncovered to support any such facility with a reasonable degree of scientific certainty. And whereas no proposed wastewater treatment facility should be constructed by the city of, of Granbury until valid sufficient and verified studies conducted regarding socioeconomic impact of such facility and the possible negative consequences of such facility on community and economic development. And whereas current plans to construct a wastewater treatment plant at 3121 Old Granbury Road may not withstand the challenge to the constitutionality of such plan under the Texas Constitution and the 15th and 14th amendments of the Constitution of the United States. As the impact of the proposed wastewater treatment plant on the interest and rights of all private property owners has not been fully developed, be it therefore resolved in Hood County Commissioners' Court requests that the city of Granbury postpone delay moving forward with a wastewater treatment plant located at 3121 Old Granbury Road until such time that all interested parties have had sufficient time to review the data and information currently being cited by the city of Granbury as a foundation for their proposed wastewater treatment plant to allow said interested parties sufficient time to cross-examine, fact-check, verify, and otherwise exercise due diligence to determine the accuracy, accuracies of such data and information and develop new data and then explore if necessary. And to allow sufficient time to determine whether a regional solution to the tra- treatment wastewater in the county at a more remote location is feasible and advisable. And to postpone current plans for construction of an additional wastewater treatment plant until such time that all viable options have been explored, adopted on this day, hopefully, 27th day of October.
Okay, that makes the new resolution as I have three speakers, that's what you do at the rest, the commissioners' court. And this is thanks upon order in which they requested a public participation form. We have Dr. Victoria Calder. Let's see if we can.
Thank you. Um, I'm Victoria Calder, I live at 1911 Greenway in Granbury. And, uh, I first want to say thank you to the 15 or 20 citizens who were here at the last commissioners' meeting, most of whom are watching virtually today on the live stream because of health concerns. Uh, but they were here to support the resolution and I, I got sort of nervous talking, you all forgot to mention or acknowledge them, so thank you to them. Um, and I also, um, want to thank anyone who is here to support the resolution today. We really want to give a huge thank you to Commissioner Eagle, uh, for putting forth this, um, resolution and for all of you here on the commissioners' court who are willing to consider it. Um, during the forums that TCEQ allowed for anyone who wanted to, to make public comments about this proposed facility, um, anyone could have, whether they were for the facility or against it. But of the 452 public comments that were submitted, I want to point out that only five of them were in favor of it. Those five were developers who don't live, except for one, who don't live or work anywhere near Granbury. So the overwhelming majority of more than 400 who were opposed, um, represent households. And I want to point that out because these house, we got big homes, big late established homes with more than one person in them. So with an average conservative estimate of two and a half people per household, that's over a thousand people who were opposed to this, who will be adversely affected, over a thousand. And those are just the ones who were willing and able to go online and make their public comment against it. For many of those who were opposed, they either didn't have a computer, didn't know how to use one, didn't know how to make those public comments, or as you know, that virtual meeting was a disaster that TCEQ held, they couldn't get on, have any trial, they couldn't get on that meeting to address their concerns. So I just want to point out the significant number of people, uh, most of whom don't live in the city but will be impacted by it. So it's basic, it's, it's valid to say that thousands of people were concerned about the impacts, uh, on their lives at this still chosen location, as they should be. And we know, we realize that if I were aware of where the sewer facility is located, they're going, they're going to opposition, nobody wants it in their backyard. But to place it in the most densely populated area of the city and then discharge wastewater through our backyards in the county, uh, with our pre-established neighborhoods, we had no choice in the matter. We bought our homes there, not near the sewer plant, and the businesses, the schools, the recreational areas established already, that will be adversely, uh, impacted, not to mention the environment and the economic impacts to the entire area. But we're here today now to build a case against the proposed sewer plant, we've done that, they will continue to do so if necessary. But we're here to support, um, Dave Eagle's resolution, Commissioner Eagle's resolution to request that the city of Granbury pause this project and instead join across the aisle to collaborate with you, the county elected officials, and with all levels of government. The prior feasibility studies included many people from across the state, subject matter experts in every area, residents from each of those. Oh, I'm so sorry. Uh, could I say?
You got, you said.
Okay, so the one, uh, all they're asking is in a feasibility study, you give any attention it deserves, which would lead to those in favor of the resolution or those against it to run around like chickens with their heads cut off in two weeks or less, trying to prove that it's feasible or not. It would be a true feasibility study, which, which does take time and involves 20% of knowledge, depending on the ones that have done previously, current technology, current and emerging legislation. If it's ever going to be built, this would be the time before an expansion makes it too difficult to purchase land. So even 10, 20 years from now, it's going to be necessary or required to have a regional plant. Better to build it with today's dollars than tomorrow's dollars, better to plant it where people can have a choice whether to live near it or not. So like Dave Eagle, Dave Eagle's resolution says away from all the established districts and neighborhoods where that freedom was denied us by this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Awesome. Next. The, Stacy Rist.
Good morning. My name is Stacy Rist. I'm here on the property next to the council plant at 3101 Old Granbury Road, also located in 92 would be affected by it. Can't come as well. But thank you for allowing us to either speak again. This room feels like a place where decisions are made based on open discussion and transparency. Questions are answered, questions are asked, opinions are voiced, and the average Joe can be heard and we feel like our voice matters. Until October 13th, I have never attended a commissioners' court. It feels like this is a lot of this kind of mission in this room. Thank you, Commissioner Eagle, for putting the resolution forward and showing interest in serving the citizens that you represent here in Hood County. I feel like the resolution is a simple one to say yes to because it simply asks for the pause button to be hit while a study is done to see if a regional plant is not more feasible. I'm talking about a larger regional solution located in a less harmful location that has the power to serve so many more homes and businesses in Hood County for decades to come. And I'm on the state board of TRVA, of recreational association, we have a government relations consultant on our payroll, and he and I were talking, um, just a few days ago, he was wanting to, um, get caught up to speed on this situation and see if he had any advisory contacts that he could help me with. And I was kind of, you know, just bringing him up to speed and telling him about the meeting here two weeks ago and mentioned that, you know, I got really heated, the city manager got really upset and seemed to be more upset about the moratorium on building than anything else. And he said, wow, that is hard to imagine that your city is more concerned about the citizens that don't even live there yet and the businesses that haven't been built yet than they are about the citizens they presently serve. And I think that just hits a nail on the head. They are so concerned about the moratorium on building. They're, you know, more concerned about it than the citizens that currently, that they're currently paid to serve. That's all I have. Do you have more questions for me?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eagle. Okay, next. Two, three, four, five.
Good morning. My name is Navee Bradch, I live at 1725 3 Court. And I'd like to, um, thank the, uh, the judge and the commissioner for this opportunity to speak, and I'd like especially to thank Dave Eagle for drafting this resolution that we feel is very, very important. I worked with a citizens, uh, group that was formed in response to this sewage treatment plant, it's called Granbury Fresh. And, um, as part of our, our efforts to look at other alternatives for, for sewage treatment in the, in the, the region, we, um, took up, we set up a GoFundMe account to get funding to, to help us fight this, this proposed plant, which we think will really seriously impact not only our colony of life, but also the colony of life within the city because we will destroy Lake Granbury. And using the funds that we obtained from that, we, we hired three engineers, three sanitary engineers to look at the proposal, and without exception, all three of those engineers said this is the worst possible location that they could put a plant. They said because it's going through a dry stream bed, it's going into the lake, and it won't have a chance to dilute the pollution that's going to be, um, coming out of that facility. So I think it's absolutely critical for the health and safety, not only of Lake Granbury, but also for Hood County, that this resolution be adopted. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the people that have signed up for the public participation. Let me say this, I, I wanted to know what the legal effect of the resolution was. I've been thinking about that, so this morning at 7:15, just making sure that he was up. I called our county attorney, Matt Mills, and he wasn't up. And I asked him, what is the legal effects if the resolution was to get passed, and rather than paraphrase, uh, Mr. Mills, Mr. Mills, would you just come up here and just tell us, please, you know, what the effect is for this resolution? Because, you know, the, the water treatment plant is within the city of Granbury, but yet these people in precinct four, which are, is, which are Eagle people, are residents of Hood County, so we're concerned about all residents of all Hood County. So I just wanted to know, and I've been hearing various things in the last meeting, people coming up and talking about it, that because of what has happened, that the process has slowed down, and now I just want to go with some other type of public process, I really can't express that, but that's what I understand, but just for you, what is the legal effect of this resolution if the commissioners' court votes and passes it?
It just represents your opinion, more or less. I mean, you can even read the text where it says, be it therefore resolved that the Hood County Commissioners' Court requests that the city of Granbury postpone delay, et cetera. So, I mean, you're basically saying, this is our opinion, I mean, you send resolutions to the legislature from time to time, asking them to do something. I mean, that's been done for many years, so, I mean, it's basically, this is our opinion, uh, we want you to consider it, uh, we think it has weight and value, and that's.
But it has no legal effect, is that what you mean?
Right, I mean, it doesn't block them from moving forward. I mean, a lawsuit or TCQ, somebody else might be able to do that, but I mean, y'all don't have, I mean, this resolution doesn't say y'all are stopped in your track, so.
And I, and I agree with you, uh, Mr. Mills, I, in fact, I explained that to the folks in four, that we really did not have legal authority to make a city do anything. And I, I acknowledge that, that's why the resolution has wording in it. Basically what we're doing is reaching out to the city and asking them to consider the folks that are downstream, uh, from the proposed plant, uh, to reconsider and kind of think about, can we, is there another way to do this? And, uh, you know, it's kind of like, it's kind of like Granbury love with, uh, with Van Morrison about reaching out and loving your neighbor, you know, I'm, I'm just asking, I'm reaching out and asking where's the love? And so that's, I agree with you, Matt, this is, we're just asking the city to stop the brakes and see if there's, uh, maybe possibly another way to go.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mills, for that.
I got one question. I would kind of piece all this together for a few days, uh, you know, I was, I was asking to put a, uh, county line, uh, where he's going to free them in Hood County, if they are, who's going to, who's going to fund this? Because, you know, it could be under 200 dollars.
May I speak to that?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, um. That's an excellent question, and that is one of the main questions that would be answered in a proper feasibility study, um, which would not be done in a short time. But looking at others, other, uh, regional plants that are funded, it's almost always a public-private partnership. Um, and, and there are grants available, there are EPA grants, they vary from decade to decade, so the old 20 year ago study, uh, in the back of that feasibility study that was done in 2020 for Hood County Regional Search, um, they had a lot of different options, most of all public-private partnerships, combination of different kinds of loans, uh, many of those who delayed, very low interest loans are available, and you have a water shed protection plant, which we do. Um, so that is one of the many questions that would be answered, but, uh, one thing that Mike Scott said, and he was going to speak at that last meeting, is that we're trying to attract as a, as a community, or he goes with businesses, those businesses that would be more likely to come if we have a regional infrastructure. One of the things he mentioned is that really you're running that Granbury has a workforce that goes beyond city limits, because companies are looking at the data and saying Granbury doesn't have the kind of workforce that would accommodate our large company or significant company coming in, but the region does. So everything's going regional with what the chamber is doing, and I wish he were here, I didn't, I wasn't sure, but he pointed out public partner, private, public-private partnerships are typically how that's done. So the question's about where would it be exactly, other than away from well-established neighborhoods, a more remote location where people would have a choice to move near it or not, or build near it or not, um, was one question. And how it would be paid, there are many, many options. Uh, that's what the feasibility study really does address, but there are options that if people have done it, it's not easy, and it does take time, more than just the weeks or months, like I said, running around like a chicken, where I've been cut off trying to answer that right now, that requires a lot of input.
I think, but if you had any information about how much, uh, really the system might cost?
Well, uh, here's, here's the thing, the old studies have it as a, uh, the old studies show it as, uh, what was it, 120 million something, which that was before the inflation, so we don't know. But again, that's what the feasibility study looks at. The cost would be based on whether it's a 20 million gallon a day, 30 million gallon a day. One thing to be erased is you would buy the land to expand to probably a 30 million gallon a day, but you wouldn't start with that. In other words, the land needs to accommodate that expansion, and that expansion is gradual as the existing facilities expire, which they do, their shell fire, the shell fires about 20 years, they go bad, they have to be rebuilt. They get the cost of that, uh, of the, you know, how many do we have now? Two, two enacted going in, one that's about to go in, there are three more planned, well, including the current one in the city of Granbury. So, and then the one that they went over, the one that, uh, Langantolar, Pecan, you add all those up together, all having to be replaced to the 200 millions, and that, and the cost of operating, each one needs their own bio monitoring lab, which is expensive. They each need their own Level A operator, which is expensive. So the economy of scale is regional, and who would run it? Would this typically put up for BIA? It could be the BRA, it could be another private entity, it wouldn't be that the commissioners would have to pay for it and fund it and build it and run it at all, or, but it would be a multi- jurisdiction, uh, facility. So those, those funding decisions are based on input from all parties, the public, private, including conservation foundations. Dr. Nick Dornak was on that public meeting, and he offered the full support of the friends of the Brazos River, we're talking Alice Wall, who kind of beat pockets there, full support of the Meadows Institute for the Environment, which he runs, uh, the Blarsha Division of that. And Dr. Dornak said, if the city would consider looking at a more environmentally appropriate, less environmentally damaging area, then we have this full support of those organizations to help locate and to help seek funding for that. So there are lots of different options, I wish I could just give that answer, but that's not my call, or the city's call, or the call we can. But that's not my call, or the city's call, or the call we can make today. That's what the feasibility study really is for, to answer, is it feasible, based on how it's going to be invented, based on what will the cost, based on where it's going to be, based on who's going to run it? And that also needs to consider, what happens if we dump to regional? What happens then? What would the cost be of maintaining, repairing, redoing all of these patchwork of single entity wastewater plants that are coming in or starting to, there's no longer a plan for that right now. It's just, they're being built as needed, replaced as needed. That cost has to be calculated.
So this needs to know that we said in the public, we think it might serve.
It typically takes a year. The last one took a year. It's not something that's going to be done in the next few weeks. And that's why we're asking the city to, what is your plan B? Because the, going forward with this plan, which could take several years, instead of pulling back and looking at, they already have a plan of one in the city, based three or four, I forget which base it is, somewhere in the west in the city and somewhere north in the city. If nothing else, pick a less destructive place for those and go forward with that. We still need to look at, we think the south plant could be expanded, they don't. But we did get a copy of the T C Q permit, which does not have a permit. See, it indicates any restrictions about that, and engineering-wise, it can be done. That is kind of a, you know, who says, we have a difference on the house. So those things need to be explored, and it can't just be done like fast, fast, fast before we do a moratorium. As Stacy said, the fact that there may have to be a moratorium on building, that's not, that's something that we would hope the city would have given some thought already to. Where would that north plant be? Where would that west plant be in the plants? And now would be the time of the, if there's ever been a hearing tomorrow.
Yes. First of all, this is the T C E Q and the city, that's the process been stopped now already?
Oh.
Am I right?
No, what happened is after the public meeting, we. No, it's.
You spinning my head if you want to wait much more.
Oh, sorry.
I noticed that the city calls it the water treatment plant, and everybody else spoke about it, the tour group. That one was very good. But I'm just saying up here, and I see various resources out there, you did a public participation deal. I don't know if you want to comment, but as I understand it, the T C E Q is already involved, and this was just the initial planning stage up here last week. But the plans have stopped right now. Am I correct? That the city cannot go forward building the water treatment plant right now?
Correct. They don't have a permit. They have a draft, which is, can be uploaded.
And so the next step is what? Is it an administrative hearing before T C E Q?
The process right now is that T C Q's reviewing.
Give me the short end of the conversation. I'm thinking we'd be responsible by over a court of law. Is the next deal an administrative hearing? Is that word? You're going to have your side, the city, and you appear before the T C E Q. Is that what happened?
After the two months of reviewing the comments, the T C Q commissioner reviews. If they go forward, then we have thirty days to request a contested case hearing, which right now would take another year and a half from that point. So T C Q's going to take another couple of months to review the comments.
So right now, the city is expected to stop because of.
Yes, yes. Yes, they don't have a permit. They can't execute or run it.
That, that's what I was really trying to get at. It's been a test that we stopped, I guess, because of the work, the work that all new citizens had.
Thousands of us.
Right. I'm gonna go ahead and ask you, do you want to comment on this, Mr. Mills?
I'll comment on, on, kind of, actually.
I'm just talking about, you know, I don't want to have to give your position of what the city is. I don't want to get into the legal weight of thirty-five privilege or any of that. I just want to know, is what stage are we in? Are you, is the city effectively stopped right now?
Effectively, the permit is on hold. We're waiting for T C E Q to address all of the comments from the public hearing. Once they address those comments, they will either issue a superment, or the case will be sent to the state office of administrative hearings for further proceeding. That's the procedural aspect of it.
So what are we talking about, time-wise, as far as it's going?
T C, T C E Q's clock, weeks, months?
So they got a lot of clock. So it's a T C E Q, as the witness said, at this point. And then how long the hearing takes from that? And I'm assuming that either side has the right to appeal from that?
That's correct. The, the, the first court is District Court of Travis Catholic, the state offices in this year. So you're potentially looking two to five years.
Yeah, two to five years. Good. Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Sound off, make a correction, Mark, and put it up.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion for anybody else?
I got one question, because I don't got that to delay connection. If this, if the regional wastewater plant comes down to a fat, and it's a regional one, it's going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars. Who's going to run it? Who's going to collect fees for the cost of all that stuff? Would they, in the fifth part, would they see Granbury?
No, almost always that's put up for bid. The B R A would be the most likely to run it and would typically bid on something of this sort, similar to the Trinity River Authority running their large hundred million plus beyond a day plant. So it wouldn't be locally run typically. You wouldn't want that responsibility. It's, it's put up for bid, and there are private companies, and also the B R A is the most likely. I can't speak for the B R A though, obviously, right now. But it would be up to you to run it, to fund it, to maintain. Right now, it's beyond that level, but it's regional.
So we, you know, if the regional bill is coming, fair, it's not allowed to do that there, but you don't require individual facial systems to go to that, or that will be happy with that?
We very much want to. All of us, all of us who are on the subject, there's over nine thousand subject systems back in 2020. Many more now. All of Mount Apoy, our neighborhood, Antewater represented, I think Highway Bay. We're in the county, we're not going to benefit from this treatment plant, although we'll be impacted negatively by it. That's not something that can happen right away. But we, we pay a lot of money. We pay twenty thousand for those subject systems each. We have to get the NRO bit. They'll have to be replaced by all of us. We also pay fees for people to monitor those. And I believe you all have an environmental department that you have to pay to deal with all that. So it's not an immediate thing. It could take many years for gradually neighborhoods to add on and for individual communities to add on.
Do you require us to take that for areas to, what, what we have environmental department to do that? County, or the state department, or the regional wastewater system, or the city, or who requires that?
And I can't answer that. I don't know that it's required. That's, that's what the feasibility study is for. There's so many good questions, but it's not something, you know, that's all, all of that has to be considered in deciding, do we want to go forward with regional? And that's a really good question. Where would it be? The county's for it, who runs it?
I'm trying to be negative about this question.
Yeah.
I got one question. What, what would we stop and do from doing that? Going ahead to that process to investigate the regions? What's, what's holding that up?
Well, the feasibility study, first of all, it's usually funded by a grant that goes through T C E Q from the Environmental Protection Agency. So they fund the feasibility study. So for instance, the last one, or the watershed protection plan, you had, there's about six million total, and I have that email confirming it, that the B R A put in to that watershed protection plan, not quite a feasibility study, but it includes travel time for the engineers to remain here to come up.
And how are we going to do that? And what's stopping you from going ahead with the regional plant?
Well, first of all, you're blessing.
Is it the county that needs to do that, to start a regional plan?
The county, what we're asking today is if you approve looking into it. The, it would be a committee, it would be a consortium, similar to the last feasibility study. It's state, usually the state will send people, the B R A agency.
I live in the feasibility study one, and I listen to the feasibility study. It said if it were to original plan, what they would do with the existing plants that we got, who's going to put into lift stations? So if you want to head, or Granbury want to head and build this facility, and you started with this process, and you say it's going to take years to do it?
It does.
Well, go ahead and do that. If the city goes ahead and builds this plant, it could be turned into a lift station, and we used to go to the regional plant, so.
So if you thought, we're counting on, and we really believe this plan will end up being approved. The T C Q may, but they're going to go to contested case, the commissioners' court, based on different opinions of engineers and experts. So this, this plan is not a good idea for many, many reasons.
So I, I think, I think one of the benefits that we have in this particular area is we have the North Central Texas Council of Government, and we could work with them. I've actually spoken with them. And they're a group that basically pulls together all, all manner of entities and stakeholders. And that would be a good starting point. And we could have them as our stakeholder. We could have the Breszis River Authority as our stakeholder. So those people, we have to express an interest. And once that interest has been expressed, then at that time, the feasibility study can get underway.
And, and thank you for that. And Edith Marasan, who's over the Environmental Department at the North Central Texas Council of Government, says they strongly recommend, and I've given you all that notebook, words in writing, that North Central Texas Council of Government strongly recommends regional. It may be required in our next decade. The state has put forward legislation, T C E Q is strongly supporting and required to support and promote regional solutions. Again, it's, it's long-range planning because the fruition wouldn't be on your watch, maybe, unless you're going to, you know, run for a decade. But if it's not done now, and it's in the future, really necessary, and there's already this explosive growth, that's going to be very problematic and much, much more expensive. But the, the plant that's being planned right now, we're saying, we're, we're going to go forward all the way. It would take years before that's decided. So we're saying, please, we, back of the city, please pull back and do a reasonable alternative now in an area that's not so impactful to so many thousands of people. And then by time, you may decide after the, or we all, it's not a term, but you know, us to do this plan, but we'll be behind you every step of the way in looking at a positive alternative.
If T C E Q gives a permit, do you relate to this? I think that the commission can go in and talk about it.
No. If T C E Q does award a final permit, which would be months from now, they're still looking at all these comments, and it's taking them, it's going to take them a while. It would be probably early next year. If they do that, which sometimes they do, then from that point, we have thirty days. Well, then there's a, then it goes to their legal for thirty days. Then it goes to the T C E Q Commission, which takes it on into spring. And from that point, they still award a final permit. We have thirty days from that point to request a contested case hearing. That goes above T C E Q to the Texas Commissioners' Court, the three who are appointed by the governor. T C Q has nothing more to say about it. They're backed up, you know, their backlog because of COVID will put that contested case hearing about a year and a half from that point. So we're talking over two years from now, for certain, before anything, before, before they can take it ever. And we don't think, we don't think they're going to win it. That's a very expensive and very time-consuming process. We would like to avoid a contested case. We, we turn in for them because you're supposed to, to show that you intend to go that. That we're going to just go, oh, okay. You know, we really, we've been advised to do that by everyone who successfully won these before, which, you know, I'm sorry.
Something, something that you keep in mind is that during this process, that the existing permits from folks like the Corps of Engineers and Fish and Wildlife Centers will expire. And so they will have to go back to the drawing board to, to get these recertified. And, and we will dog it every, every, uh, bit of the way because we'll, we'll file, we're aware of it now. We weren't aware of it the first time. And so we'll be, we will there, be there protesting until, until the finisher ends.
And Ms. French, by the way, is a retired Army Corps of Engineer engineer. This is her lifetime career. So she's, she knows what she's talking about with what it means to have to go back to the drawing board during these next two years and keep trying to get these permits renewed. Like I say, we didn't get any opportunity to step in at that point.
So what I hear from y'all right now, it's going to take at least two years, three or four, anything you have. So it's pretty much stopped.
Yeah, maybe two to five years. And what we're saying is, don't waste this time. When we met with some of the city council people back in June, we said, you know, don't waste this time. Pull back now and get your plan B going. But in here, four months later, we're pushing, pushing, pushing for this. So we're saying that, you know, get another option. And we, we've tried to point out some, and we get the yes backing, that we're, we're willing to do, put all of our time into helping.
Can I jump in?
Uh huh, yes, please.
For the, say, or just for the application of the other commissioner. We're not trying to do merits to the case today. This is a resolution that's reaching out to the city. It has no legal effect. It's basically a policy statement. I'd like to just make the motion that we approve the resolution as worded. And if I get a second, we go in there, we move on. We're not going to try this case today. So I make the motion that we pass the resolution as worded.
I think it's really important. Things that, that, that happen in the county happen to everybody. And, and you all have the best interest of all the county residents.
And I will know that this is in my precinct. So I'll, again, putting a motion on the table to approve the resolution as I read into the record. And all I got to do is redate it for today. Please.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to pass his resolution to the state of the forty-three from here. That is ready to go to the record. Do I hear a second? Okay. Motion fails. We're left with a second. I just want to say this, is that Hood County, Fisher's Court, the hundred and essential part of this location, location between the residents, we are, second, approving for, I understand that. And the city of Granbury, I understand that. And T C E Q, I understand that. And the process is that, that T C E Q is not going to find a decision on this. So those awards, and then it's not even following, end up in jury draw before it, at Horizon. Very title to jury draw. After the subway, we'll discuss with the district court for, for. It goes to the district court, and then it includes Mayor, the Board of Heels, and Spring Court, I suspect. We're kind of inconsequential to do what I would call not an essential party to this litigation. Everybody is impacted by this. We want to take care of all the citizens in this county. I think you kind of accomplished what we wanted, for your citizens here. Not going to be a wastewater treatment plant there on Granbury Road or whatever for the next five years. Am I right? Okay. Sorry, Mayor.
Let me just say something.
Okay, you can make this statement.
All right.
What was the question?
First, first of all, I want to, I want to thank the commissioners and the judge for being involved in this. Because, you know, just like you said, Judge, even though we've got things in the city limits, it's going to involve everybody. And wastewater treatment plant will involve everybody. So they, Mr. Eagle, I appreciate the resolution. And as I read through this thing, I've read through it many, many times. We fulfilled almost every bit of the things on this thing, and we fulfilled some of them today. With the speaker you had up here talking, and they had an opportunity to talk. They've had an opportunity to talk to council people. They've had an opportunity to counsel, I've talked to myself. I've had one-on-ones with the involved people. I've had one-on-ones with the people I didn't even know, engineers, and people like that, that have talked about this thing. And we've talked about it, and we've got, and we've taken notes, and we've made changes, and we've done things. We went back to the drawing board and saying, and it is on hold right now, and that's what you requested here. There's going to be time. This thing, it's, it's going to be bitter. Well, I'm saying, let's hope it's not going to be bitter. But, you know, we got Project Three Seventy-Seven, and that thing's going to take forever to do. And this project here is starting to look a lot like that. So, you know, we need this thing. We need it for the growth. We need it for the, the nine largest growing community in the, you know, in the nation. We've got one, we've got a plant right now in, in, in Mr. White's area. You know what's going on at that plant right now? We're modifying that thing. See, it's, it's in your precinct there, and we're modifying that thing. It's going to be eighteen months of work to do on that thing. We're making it even better. We're working on that plant right now. You know, I get all the calls for that plant. I get all the calls for, you know, the pipes and things like that. You know, have you ever gotten any calls about that plant? Probably not. And it's in your precinct. It's in your precinct. And it's in your precinct, it's in your precinct. So we, we're going to work together, we're working together, Judge.
Well, we're trying to work together.
And that's why I appreciate, I appreciate this resolution. Because that tells me you guys at least, you know about it, you know where it's at, you know what it's doing out there. And so we're going to continue to work together with these plants, with those kind of things, and make sure that we, you know, that, that we're all on board with this stuff.
That's, we're asking now, let's get involved at the inception.
We are, all right.
Okay, good.
So thank you once again for the involvement, you guys, with this resolution. And I'm sorry I didn't, you know, get a second, but, you know, we still understand what's going on out there.
Thank you.
Stick with us.
Thank you. Okay, item number 12 here. Consider take appropriate action regarding sheriff's request for $14,950 for 25 Panasonic computers. $13,360 refunded on March 23rd, 24th, 21st. So we've already got, we're just talking what? 1600 new money, right?
Yes.
Okay. So what's the status of this? I know you needed sheriff, you got to have it.
Yeah, Judge, commissioners, what this is, it's a, the new tablets that we have are really big tablets. And so they're kind of like a, a phone. When you bring up the keyboard on that, it's just little mini squares that you can type on. So what this request is, is for the purchase of 25 Panasonic keyboard docks. So the docking station would be underneath it, and the computer would stick into that. And then the keyboard were, another problem we've had in years past is that the touchscreen wears out. So this is to save that touchscreen. So we had 13,360 refunded in two different chats that happened. This was from that order from back in March. It was almost a $600,000 order. Part of that was refunded, so the money that went back into the 155, so basically asking for 1,590 to extra to buy these 25 docking stations.
Judge, we understand that, Sheriff. Do you hear a motion?
Yes, Judge, I make a motion, they want to ask the governor, sheriff's request for $14,950 as 25 E or box, 25 Panasonic.
A few seconds. A motion made by Commissioner Eagle to put the sheriff's request of $14,950 on 155 for the additional keyboard dock for the 25 Panasonic computers. Second, by Commissioner White. All those in favor, say aye, nay, or aho. Motion carries five to zero. All right, let's bring this down to item number 13. We've got the sheriff and the illustrious Pope baby here from Con Valley. Here to receive presentation, discuss take appropriate action, authorized county judge, assigned to Con Valley Center for the County Sheriff's Office. They want their understanding for crisis intervention response team. This statement consists of two deputies and a licensed manager civil technician to work on crisis intervention with people in mental health crisis.
Thank you, commissioners. We've come a long way in the time that I've been sheriff with, working with, working very closely with the Con Valley Centers. And this is kind of the next step, moving forward a little bit more. We've had the, the Con Valley Centers has had the MCO team in place for a number of years. And those people share an office with one of my mental health people. And they get called upon quite often because of people in mental health crisis. And so this just makes it to the next level. This person has a higher level training that can do a whole lot more than the people on that MCO team. So I've designated two deputies to do this job for the last couple of years. One has got activated with the Army to help with the COVID stuff. So she probably will be back till the end of the year. But the plan is still to have two people after the first year, and I've got one person doing this now. So these L P H As, we're working with that deputy to, to do mental health stuff and help us go to the next level, you know? Maybe you want to say anything or not, but this is a great thing to help with. We have people that have reoccurring events that hopefully this would help calm that down a little bit within work and gradually with them at the time of the crisis. So it's a, it's a great thing for the county.
You know, I talked to both the sheriff and to talk about this field. What I like about it is that it is, we've got so many people that handle crisis situation here. And what I like, that Mr. Bailey said that he had five volunteers that actually did wanting to go out and go on people that were in the crisis. And there's a duty about it. They already paid, there's some cost to tell no money. And they are insured through the Con Valley Association through their own fund. So there's no liability to the counties, is that correct?
That, that is correct.
And we've already checked it out with your insurance, Sheriff.
Checked it out with our risk management fund and our, our general counsel. And this is a program that's in operation in other communities in Texas and has been for some years. And the issue, like the sheriff stated, is you have folks that go, or they respond often to people in a mental health crisis, which could include substance abuse as well. And so they're deputies, and sometimes the Grandberry P V are the first responders. And many times they're able to just control the situation and make a referral. The issue is people do not follow up with those referrals. So we know that services work. This is something we know. We know that people that are in care, receiving services and medication and counseling and the continuity of services they need to remain stable in the community, that works. Those people tend to not commit suicide or commit violent crimes or go to jail.
It's always the first step that's the hardest. If you've got somebody that's out there that's a master's physician, that can talk to those people, send them a lot of what they already have that doesn't have.
Correct, so that's why we need access.
Definitely increase up the sheriff's department, that's it, sheriff's, but like, it, it's just a win-win for everybody. And by the way, at Con Valley, your leadership does a fabulous job.
Thank you.
Do you have how many counties did you area?
Uh, we, we serve six counties, Palat County, Parker, Eretta, Johnson, and some other counties. So we, I just want to make sure everybody knows that we never closed our clinics during the pandemic. We were open every single day. We had staff in the office. We continue to, we are a healthcare organization. We are essential workers, just like all, just like everyone. But, and so hats off to my staff, first of all, for going, you know, putting themselves at risk early on. It's very scary. So we had to deal with fear, I'm sure y'all did too, of your employees coming to work and leaving their homes. We've seen a, a real spike because many healthcare providers are not in operation. People are likely to leave their homes. We've seen a real spike in mental health crisis. Suicide is up. Child abuse is up, substance abuse is up. There's a real tragedy here that is going flying under the radar. Beyond the tragedy of people dying from the virus, there are people dying at high, very high numbers in our community and across the United States due to the big isolation that they're experiencing. What this will do in collaboration with sheriff's department is provide an immediate onsite assessment and diagnosis of an individual to get them into services immediately. And then with, without that, they'll, my staff will be able to go make a home visit to follow up on that process, make sure they're keeping, encouraging them to keep referrals, follow up on their referrals, I mean, and receive services. So we think they're going to be great outcomes. We're going to be collecting a lot of data. This is a pilot. We have no special funding for this. To fully fund this, it would cost about $200,000 a year to fully fund, to make it seven days a week system. We're going to run this as a pilot, two days a week, two shifts a week. We're going to be collecting a lot of data. Oddly, the, the data we've seen nationally and statewide, that I think will experience that here. Will have fewer arrests of people with mental illness. Will have fewer people with mental illness in the jails. These officers will not become injured as frequently when they're trying to make an arrest of someone that has a mental illness. So any other outcomes as well, we're going to be collecting a lot of data. And I absolutely want to share that with y'all. And then we are, we'll be looking for permanent funding source at the end of the fiscal year. Hopefully there will be some state grants come up and, and we're going to look at those.
You have a good organization, and I disagree with you about one thing, I think it's hard to secure, you probably get it. You and all of your people do an excellent job, and we're going to, we're going to, you're going to ask my job. I'm hopeful, Sheriff, you for this?
Oh, yes. That's a, that's definitely for it. This is a great thing. This will be able to start building some statistics for those grants that will hopefully come out. So we'll be able to apply for those grants and, and fund this program and help the county. So, yes, I'd ask that you, for authorized, and we've got to get this signed, and what you, so we move forward. Do I hear a moment?
I have to help make that motion for county judge to sign with Con Valley Center and Hood County Sheriff's Office.
A few seconds. A motion made by, Sheriff. You allow the county judge to sign the Con Valley Center, Hood County Sheriff's Office, remember, that they're understanding the crisis intervention response team. So if I, Commissioner White, all those in favor, say aye, nay, or aho. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Sheriff, thank you, Pope baby.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the work you do.
Appreciate that, appreciate the, the work that you do and work that commissioners do in the county.
I like the fact you never took the day off, because I don't like that. Really easy, we never close it. All right, item number 14. Consider take appropriate action, authorized county judge, to sign the appropriate sharing agreement.
Sheriff. Commissioners, this comes up every year that, what this authorizes the county for with this being signed is that we're able to receive federal money for, for seniors, different things, different grants, different things that come up. As of right now, what this keeps us in is being able to, I have had one, my deputy is assigned to the U S Marshals. If he gets paid for overtime money, which the county doesn't pay, I saw it, so it's a little bit of money. And we have to keep this agreement active and going. So every year, bring it to court to get it approved by the courts, we can send it in and keep moving forward.
We've done this in the past.
Oh, yes, for, for years.
Do I hear appropriate?
Judge, I want a motion to allow the county judge to sign that for sharing agreement.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner White. What is county judge deciding for sharing agreement? Signed it by Senator Dever. All those in favor, say aye, nay, or aho. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Item number 50. Consider take appropriate action, authorized county judge, to sign in April, region, 4th of all event application. You're allowed parking on a box in 100 cars on Saturday, November the 14th, 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Sheriff, I saw them reading through this material here, backup here, they should, that they said something, they did have to furnish insurance. We always require insurance, particularly markets that order a bit of this nature. I believe this, that, like everybody's understanding, is why you, there. Is it, that's, I think, I don't want anything to happen to anybody or their cars or anything else. So I think that they need to furnish insurance, don't you? Do you agree with that, Mr. Mill?
That's normally what I do.
Yeah, I've never, I've never approved anything on the 4000 square without them coming back with the appropriate insurance. So I guess the motion is, you know, we will approve it unless there's a conflict that we might have. For November the 14th, 2020, providing they, they produce to the satisfaction of liability insurance problems subject to the approval of Mr. Mill, he are county attorney. And I'll make that motion. I'll take it. Okay, motion made second. So just, it's fun discussion. All those in favor, say aye, nay, or aho. Motion carries five to zero. So at least you, these fellow people, what I can tell you was approved intention upon them, providing insurance policy. Yeah, there's a guy in my campaign, a question. Yeah. I hope you snuck out here. That's what I mean, I'm going to be a lieutenant. Listen.
I'm sorry, I was trying to warm up.
Let me ask you that. Every time the county event, most of the stores swear, we've always required people to have a liability insurance policy. These Porsche people said that they could.
Let me, yes, sir, we talked about that last time also. Let me turn on my hearing aids here so I can hear all that. Um, the rule is, on the permit, is if you expect more than 300 people at your event, that is not a 300 person event. We're talking probably, last time we had 45 or 50 cars, we'll probably have 65 or 70 cars. So specifically at the event, you might have 150 people, okay? In order to have liability insurance, the permit requires at least 300 people at the event. Or that's, that's the cutoff where you need liability insurance.
So how would you control, you know, a bit more than plus 99 people?
I'm sorry, how do we control that? Well, it's, well, the, the event is a Porsche event. You're going to have over 300 people on square, and I'm not going to provide liability insurance for the other 800 people that are shopping. It's the same conversation we had last time in Porsche's camp.
Well, now, they've all got insurance, all those guys driving cars.
Yeah, but I hear it is, they got a lot of insurance.
So, you know.
And, and all they're, all they're doing, their event is called Mass and Mokas, it's a little bit. The Moka thing kind of loses me. But, but the deal is, Judge, they, they're going, they're going, they're going to bring out, hold on, I got, I got, I got the argument here.
Mr. Mills, do you agree with that? We got 100 people out there with a Porsche car. Um, what are we talking about, somebody tripping on a Porsche car there, or they're backing into somebody in the square?
What did we do, was it a Mustang?
We talked about it last time, so.
Who is the group, the Mustang?
Yeah, it's a, it's a group.
Okay, so I thought it was a different car, but anyway, okay, yeah. And so we didn't, they didn't actually have a, a policy last time, is that right?
Right, because they had, you're.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're going to drive in, park their cars, shoot the brays, go get some coffee, go have some snacks and leave. The reason, the, the reason the event is listed is from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. is in order to close the square or keep the cars off the square, I have to close it early. They will actually probably arrive about 10 o'clock and leave about 11:30 or noon. And all they're going to do, they'll probably walk into Paradise Beach Row or wherever, get some coffee, get some snacks, do some, you know, wander around the square. Busy Grandberry is involved, I mean, they know it's a great event, it just brings, brings a lot of people to the square, and a lot of people will borrow money.
Is there a policy saying 300 people?
The, the, the permit, the request for the permit that I guess was written by the city and the county years ago, I specifically asked this question last time, and the answer was no, as long as you don't have more than 300 people at your event. And frankly, last time, other than, other than the Porsche drivers, there probably weren't 25 people walking around looking at cars. You know, so I mean, really, it was kind of a non-event. A bunch, a bunch of cars came in and parked, had a good time, stayed for an hour or so. But they're excited about Grandberry, they want to come to Grandberry, they liked the, the response they had last time, they want to come back. These guys come to Motorsports Ranch about four times a year. They spend a ton of money at Grandberry in Hood County. We would really like to get, get them over here more often and have some car shows once we get out of this COVID deal. But this is, this is just a really, it's a drive-in event. They do it every month. They did it last month at Neiman Marcus. Neiman Marcus hosts them, they drive into their parking lot, they do some pit racing, shoot the brays, they have snacks. They're willing to bring in a coffee truck or something like that. And I said, well, you know, I just can't just spend the money in the restaurants around the square. So that's it, they meet, shoot the brays, they're, they're a very. They're, they're a very social group. They've got 20, no, they got 40, they got 4,000 members in the Metroplex. Most of them, as you might imagine, are in Dallas. So anyway.
You see anywhere where the county could be live?
Not really. I mean, we've done this before. I kind of, I remember there was something vaguely, but I didn't know exactly. But I mean, you know, we've done this before. It's our policies, he said, you know, they come park. I don't know. I don't see too much to, you know, to put us on the hook, so.
Thank you, Lance. Maybe around 40 hours.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't even know this was, this wasn't on my radar stream. I looked at the agenda, so this is all kind of new question. I mean, it doesn't, it seems pretty, you know, on the list.
I was wanting to discover out of your budget.
Yeah.
I don't care, so.
Okay.
Okay. I, I just never heard that every event that I've ever been on the square, I think since I've been here.
Well, we, we, we have heard one much too long ago. Before we, you know, there's, there's a couple of hours.
Oh. Well, with that explanation and with that explanation from Mr. Mills up here, do I hear a motion?
Mark, I will get a motion in a second. We'll go to the front.
Yeah. That's the way to modify it. We'll go to what? So discuss it.
So the, you bring the motion to subject to the insurance will strike that portion of it and authorize it. I say.
You may.
I did.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All both. Motion, Sheriff. Yes. All right. The next item, Sheriff.
I'm going to pull this out. Before I do it, I just want to, Judge, I just want to let you know that I look forward to working closely with you and Becky next budget cycle, which actually begins in a few months. And I'm more than happy to bring my 30-plus years of business experience to the table as well as my educational background, which most people don't know, and my mom's not here to tie it, so I'm going to do it. I have an MBA from North Texas University, where we focus on finance, management, economics, accounting, and other issues, statistics, as well as my legal background from St. Mary's University, where I received my law degree in 1996. Kumbala, I graduated Kumbala. So Judge, thank you for the opportunity to work closely with you next budget cycle. And with that said, I'm pulling item 16.
All right. Good. The all of the insurance that we are on the budget, it's a total budget that I work on with the county auditor on this side. I think the next time we will, we've got to get outside auditor, we'll all work closely. I think it goes smoothly. Make sure we work with the committee. That's good. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Item number seven, considering taking appropriate action, authorize a county judge to sign the 2021 formal grant application resolution for the Indigent Defense Grant Program. It's here. That here.
Well.
The whole thing about here is it's here. I know it's cold.
That way you can wash your hands. You don't have anything. I'm sorry.
This is something that you do every year. We've just received money back. We spend a lot of money on the defense. I'm done working on that report right now. And so that we receive a portion of that back, a very small portion, but every little bit counts. So yes, sir, please sign this.
Did you listen to that? Okay. With that explanation, I hear a motion. So, okay, motion made by Commissioner Deaver to authorize a county judge to sign the 2021 formal grant application resolution for the Indigent Defense Grant Program. Second, by Commissioner White. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All both. Motion, Sheriff, four zero. Okay. Next item, item 18, consider taking appropriate action to approve a consulting agreement with an IP firm to work with the county's IP department regarding security. Often this is on the agenda, and let me tell you why. Parker County was hacked two weeks ago Friday. The county judge came to see the last Tuesday, a week ago. And he said that their county is shut down effectively. All of them. I asked him specifically, and that kind of scared me initially, but I said, what about the voting wheel? And he says, no, Judge, it didn't affect our voting wheel because like your county, we have a closed voting system that is not exposed to the internet or Wi-Fi system. He said, we really get hurt. But he says, right now, our county is literally, and these are his words, we're operating on how they are in Raymond's 2020. Using a big cheap tablet and a pencil. We can check files, get that, it shuts the county down, and it's still shut down. So if you manage to find all that, they're going to have work to do. And they're going to spill it in some of their information also. And it's going to be expensive. So what I asked him, I said, well, and looking at it, I know you got through with your expectation of things, and there are possibilities that this could have shown my end up. And he said, yes, I think so. So I asked him, I said, what is the name of the individual that's repairing the system in Parker County right now? He gave me the individual's name. I have contacted him. So I won't bother him right now because I know he's got his hands full right now. But I then told Drew Whittaker and told him that I was going to do that. But first of all, I called him and told him that Parker County had been hacked or ran somewhere about it. And I think Drew was very surprised. But it can happen to anybody. And I'm not faulting our IP, IP department about anything. But just like our auditor has an outside auditor that comes up and checks server work. And just like if a doctor killed me, I had to have my leg taken off, I would get a second opinion before I went to my leg taken off. So it's not throwing cast aspersions at you, Mr. Whittaker, or anybody in your department. But I think it's a very good idea and I intend to be proactive and not reactive. I don't want the county hacked or shut down in any way. Now, I think, just like when I was practicing attorney and I drafted a very important document, I would give it to another one of my law partners to just read over and just see, just give a new set of eyes on it just to see if I overlooked anything because I've read the document so much and worked with it so much, just to see if there's something that I missed or something I could do better. So I don't know what a consult with cause. I haven't, I've talked to one individual and I haven't submitted a consulting agreement. I only got it last night at Iowa. But my whole point was to bring it through the Michigan's floor. To both of them, to let everybody know that in the end of transparency in this court is that I want somebody who expected to work with the IP department to see if there's anything at all that can be done to make sure that we're not hacked. So that's my deal.
I agree with the judge of what he's saying. You know, they just see, you know, more eyes for nothing, you know, if there's nothing, they find them, they're okay. You know, there's been many conflicts about how to be proactive. But once it happens, you're, you're in trouble.
Absolutely. So that's what I'm proud to do. So the only thing that I'm saying up here is that I'd like to make a motion myself that the county go ahead and start the process by talking with prospective consulting agencies to see what they would charge. And then to go ahead and consult with Drew Whittaker as well up there about political operations and let them look at it because I'm going to be real careful about who's going to get into our IP department also. So it's, it's a dangerous situation here, but I, I really want to make sure that this, we've done everything that we can do to avoid it.
Now, we need to, this, this has been a conflict. Have you been quite with?
There are some exclusions or discretionary exemptions in local government code. We'd have to look at it and see if his realm of expertise falls under one of the professions that they will exempt. If he's a, if he's a gentleman that has only himself, as you can use it as a personal exemption. But if they have employees, you can't use that.
Can you work with her to come down?
You bet.
Yeah. That's, that's all I wonder about. And discussing this, I don't know if Mr. Whittaker told me that. I guess it's been about a year ago that we've had people regarding land through the state for AP and P wanting to talk about a holiday that was by voting system. It's what it was on the field. And I, I know that this producer scored five minutes. Said, who's going to vet the guys that somebody looking into our election system? Y'all remember that video?
Yes.
I trust the people back here. We've got a closed system. Everybody that votes here, they're not, our elections are not susceptible to being hacked. They were closed. They're not exposed to the internet, Wi-Fi, or any of that. Like, am I correct in that assumption?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Drew, you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not, I want anybody to know that our election.
I was going to say, I have the results right here, of course, in this 7852139 confidentiality. We can discuss that. It is a 50-page report of something.
I want to discuss it. My whole purpose on putting it up here was to get a group of commissioners for us to start talking to people. And I want to start interviewing them as soon as possible to see what is involved in checking our system to see if there is something. I thought Judge Dean himself, I wanted to speak with the guy that has firsthand knowledge of what happened to cause Parker County to be hacked. And since we're being broadcast up here, they think right now what happened is that one of the county employees flipped onto a hacker link. And when that happened, boom, it went through. They've been hacked since August and then chose to pull the plug, but we could go that's right. So they did it by that.
That's why I should, to, that one person for all of us.
That's right. So.
Making happy, we've got a history of the world.
Correct. Right.
But I'm, I'm with you. I'm going to be saying so.
Right. When I talk to Drew about this, he tells me, he says, it's just funny, you should bring this up, Judge, is that the IP department did a test on the employees of us. And then before they can tell about the test, he ran and what the results were.
Well, gentlemen, we ran a simulated test as we are currently live streaming that anyone around the world could in theory, watch and gain information concerning that. So we ran a phishing test, just like what happened in Parker County. And sadly, we had a 50% failure.
And how do you know about that? Can you describe what happened?
So basically what we did is it was a simulated test over the luncheon. And basically they asked me to register to go to the luncheon, but it was all fake. And of course, I have the list and I can send it to everyone who's a former of every individual person that has put on that link and entered in their county credentials to that email, effectively giving the attacker access to our network, essentially. And again, we could put, like you said, Commissioner Deaver, we can put all the money in the world to it, but our weakest link is the employees. Yep.
So what is rule number one? You know, we took that test. I took the test about things to look for that pop up on the field and kicking on to that kind of link. It's one of the big things that you never should do. The second question that Drew told me that, I asked him, I said, well, did that scam the Alisa West? Pass the test or not? Happily, they did. They were in the 50% of the, they did. They did not click on to the hyperlink. So I was real proud about that. So please, all the county employees know, it's not going to be less work because the county is shut down. It's going to be tremendously arse work to do it. And we're going to find out who did it. So I'm absolutely at the wheels. So please be very careful about that. But so what's my motion, Mills? I just think it's a good idea to be proactive about, I don't know what it would call. I don't know what is involved. I don't know. Ms. Walters just said it's one individual that we know that's invented, that can do that, that can work well with the IP department to make sure they go back to back and test it, consulting, representing, consulting agreement. This is the Michigan's court. But all I want to do is to try to be proactive and defend us from being hacked or run somewhere. Would any response to that?
Absolutely. I think we should take a proactive response rather than a reactive response because a reactive response would basically be us trying to recover.
And so we will all work together. So I'm hoping to make a motion to the IP department. I presume I have to try to make a motion. We all think it's worthy of a process.
Well, I guess I can make a motion, consider taking proper action to move forward with the consulting agreement. I think our, our county has a path to better secure our, you know, insurance.
Good.
And you decided so.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Deaver to allow consulting for this work. Our, to work with our IP department to make sure that we have all the security measures in place.
So I think we're going to need to, not just one, two, three, four, go after that.
Yeah. Come back. Yeah. Take photos. We get close, get it, and then we will vote on it. And I think it's get started with the vetting process of getting somebody to do a security consultant. And then second by Commissioner White. All those in favor say aye. All both. Motion, Sheriff, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Whittaker. Okay. Now, the last item, item 18, make a being to, you know, it's a request pursuant to section 551 on 071, to consider a tax evasion request proposal by West and Silver Project. So, uh, y'all want to, I guess the first thing is to say that we want to convene into an executive section to discuss the tax evasion and how come that is passed. So I guess that's a good idea.
So we're going to be talking about, you know, the whole thing. That's what I was advised by the county commissioner. It's done that fast, isn't it, right?
Yes. Wait a minute.
Okay. Well, good. Well, right now, we're going to the P and to the executive section. We're going to, now we're going to, oh. We're going to, how many times have we talked?
Well, actually, I need to, you know, briefly, you went to West and Silver Project.
Well, come on up here. That was what you almost said, we called all the rapper.
I don't have much to say. I just wouldn't know what it was.
Oh.
I don't think we've talked about that.
We, yeah. We could tell, and then we have to get rid of it.
I'm glad I'm not on the scale.
Judge, I'm, I know that Mr. Grant would want to leave and put it out there that say in the firm, maybe name, name some barrier that's pretty important, but thank you. I didn't believe you. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We are agreeing to the big end. We have to talk to the executive. Back. Back, are you all, yeah, I think we're back into the commission's court, three. And after that, the appropriate action, the four dollar video we give, that we're going to set this on the docket for, where is this docket? Number one, it's gonna be ten, the next two major court meeting, which, I'm checking, uh, that it's a, we're gonna, that this matter on the, which the court, November the, yeah, yes, twenty, twenty-two, Alicia, do you have that?
Yeah, I have it.
Which we're putting this matter, that right here, the West Camp Silver Project will be on the, which is four, or number the ten, twenty, two, two. To, 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 to that payment request, with every vote, um, uh, our county attorney, that bills, and West Camp Silver, we will get together for a completely, like, your motion to that?
So move.
Okay. And Commissioner, I've made a motion, so the, Commissioner Deaver, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you, and we finish up, it was exactly five minutes. Hail to you.